Or we just ask for traveling mercy, be with them as they compete and just help them do the best they can do. The coaches do the best they can do and just that they just do their best. Or we just are thankful to be here tonight and just God direct us in Jesus' name we pray. Okay, everybody have a copy of the agenda, any changes need to be made. You know, we'll accept the motion for adoption. Ms. Johnson, Ms. Lewis, on the table. Yes, sir. First on the agenda, we have the minutes from the previous meeting. Any questions about the minutes? If there's no questions, I would ask the board to move these to the consent agenda for the regular monthly meeting. Well, we don't have it. I'm sorry the way I asked that. And then, next item on the agenda is the monthly financials. Mr. Dre Hush is here tonight and Mr. Dre Hush will present the financials. I will take a moment, I mean, since this is the work session, we're all here together. Mike is going to be retiring tonight and we're glad to have him here with us. Very thankful for his service over the last six years, go on, seven years. And he's done an excellent job, he really moved this school system in a positive direction. Mike came to us from the American Sumpur County Schools where he had been the finance director for, director CFO for five years, almost six years there. Prior to that, had experience in hospital administration. Prior to that, had worked in the private sector, Vanity Fair Corps and different private sector businesses. So, appreciate your service, Mike, and honestly, we're gonna miss you and wish you the best. This will be the last financial report you give us.
It could've been a good one.
It's still a good one, yeah. This will be for the period ending November 30, 2017. Our cash in bank is nine million, one hundred and twenty thousand, forty dollars and seventeen cents. With fund balance of nine million, one hundred and twenty thousand, ninety-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. We've got a, again, our fund balance beginning July 1 of 2017, you see there was nine million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents. We've had total revenues to date of eighteen million, six hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-five cents. And total expenditures of eighteen million, eight hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred and two dollars and forty-four cents. For that ending fund balance at November 30 of nine million, one hundred and twenty thousand, ninety-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. As you look at the comparative sheet, for that same November, looking back to the year prior, we're still sitting at about two million, not quite three million dollars, two million eight right now. So, we're still in a good place. I will tell you that, I just looked at our December, we've got our first December property tax check and we got a check for five million, forty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars and ten cents. So, that is not in these numbers and will go on. For December, we should still see another million five or something around a million, a million five that will come in. So, the total for December will be about around six and a half. Okay, I guess we'll go to the detail.
Yes, sir.
Want to? If you don't want to, that's fine. We were at almost forty-two percent of the year at this point in time, as of the end of November. And revenues, obviously lagged behind for a period of time. We're sitting at twenty-nine percent overall, but, and twenty-four percent on that property, local property tax line. But, as I just mentioned, that five million dollars will plug in there and we'll have about three quarters of our property taxes by the end of December here.
That's great. You know, our property owners in Coffee County, the time I've been involved here, really done a good job paying the property taxes. We're blessed to have.
Yeah, November was.
Really blessed.
Right. November was two million four for the early payers. We got a nice, a nice chunk in November as well, so that certainly doesn't hurt. Looking at the expenditure sheet, again, forty-two percent of the year. And we're sitting right there at twenty-nine percent, twenty-nine point seven, almost thirty percent there. So, we're trending, basically spending dollar for dollar whatever we're bringing in right now on our, on our revenues through the end of November. Any questions? Okay. Now, the SLOST report. November SLOST wasn't quite as, as healthy as the two prior months. We had four hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and six cents. We're still a little over four hundred and sixty thousand, a four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar number as far as your average receipts for the month. And to date, we've sold, we've spent fourteen million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, sixty dollars and eighty-three cents. And I will mention that we are very nearly have spent the bond, the fifteen million of bond money that we, we had sold when we first put this SLOST in place. So, that, that money is about gone at this point in time. So, from here forward, once we go through that million, it will be a pay-as-you-go kind of situation for our SLOST expenditures. Questions, guys? Thank you.
Any questions on that? And if there's no questions, we'll place that on the consent agenda for the regular monthly meeting. Strategic planning update, we have Dr. Joy Perrin here to talk to the board about strategic planning. We've had several meetings to develop a new strategic plan and Joy Perrin sort of tells that.
Good afternoon. Just wanted to give you an update. You know, we're in the middle of strategic planning. We're planning our next five-year strategic plan. We, in November, several of you attended, we had a stakeholder meeting with seventy-five stakeholders that gave us input on what they wanted to see in our new strategic plan. This month, in December, the executive team, which consists of about twenty people, came back together and crafted what that group, that stakeholder group came up with. And you can see on that slide of the sticky notes where that's what the community came together. So, we kind of organized it based on what they said and worked with that team on Tuesday to draft it down to about four huge goals. And the team did a great job. Mr. Preston was there and was very insightful and brought a lot of good ideas to the group. And this is kind of what we did and I'll show you what we did. Dr. Reese, you want to say anything about the process itself?
I've been real pleased. We had the community meeting and there were over seventy-five community members there. We talked about that last month and some of you were in attendance at that meeting. And they walked through the, the idea of basically asking everybody who was there what they want to see in our school system. And, and those ideas were tossed out, put up on the board and, and lodged discussion over about a three-hour period. And then that was refined by the group at the meeting earlier this week, or was that, that was last week? And so, it's just been really productive.
Yeah. And not only did we draft the goals, but we also looked at, looked at the vision, the mission, and the strategic goals. And as you can see up there on the top are the ones we have presently. The group did have a lot, a lot of great discussion about a vision, a mission, and strategic goals. And this is the draft that we came up with. Now, these are proposed. We're gonna ask for input from all stakeholders, if, what they think about it and if they want us to make any changes to it. And I'll give you a second to look at that.
There's a lot of talk about vision being where we, we see our school system in the future and what we want the outcomes to be. And after hearing from the community members, there was a lot of talk about, if you look at the bottom on the left, creating a stronger community through an equitable and excellent education for every student. The idea that it's more than just the schools, it's about all of our stakeholders in Coffee County. And so, there was addition of community points there. And then with the mission, there was a lot of conversation about what do the local businesses and industries want to see us doing? Or the outcomes that they, they see us achieving? What do parents and people want the outcomes to be with their young people when they finish school? And I think that, that led to this idea of preparing students to achieve success in a lifetime of purpose. Beyond just graduation from high school, we want young people to be prepared for life. Which goes beyond just graduating from high school. So, we want young people who show up to work, who show up on time, ready to go to work. And who can hold a job and can be successful citizens. And so, the thought was that preparing students to achieve success in a lifetime of purpose really kind of boils down to what we're hearing from our business and industry partners and what we're hearing from the community and faith community and families, parents. So, just a thought, these are just drafts, just things that were discussed.
There was a lot of conversation about this. We wanted it to be very powerful, but very easy to remember. And, and I think the group did an excellent job of doing that and drafting those.
And then the goals over there, within our last plan, we had nine strategic goals. With the Ford Next Generation model, the idea is organizing it within their framework. So, we boiled it down, starting, what, we had seven goal areas to start with? And then as we kept working on making it tighter and tighter, it came to four goal areas. Teaching and learning, focusing on teaching and learning. Workforce and life, we've heard a lot about workforce, preparing students for work and for life. People and culture, focusing on our, our local citizens and working together with the community. And then that's the culture of the organization too, a healthy culture.
And schools.
And, and schools and school culture. And then the family and community outreach or working with birth to pre-cave organizations, the churches that work with children and Head Start and those organizations that work with children, the hospitals.
And continuing to involve our community like we do with our school governance teams.
And then this financial responsibility was added as kind of the foundation. You imagine having four pillars holding up a roof. And then as the foundation, you would have the financial responsibility piece. Because we know without the finances, we can't really do a whole lot. So, this is a kind of general framework that we're working on and we'll be coming back to y'all next month.
How's it feel? It's wonderful. I was at the middle school meeting and this very well summarizes what was shared that night.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for the hard work.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you remember those.
Exactly.
How Tom took those, all those ideas and we came down, how many did we end up with?
Seven.
Seven? And then we took it from seven down to four.
We had a lot of sticky notes that night, so to go from all those sticky notes to this was a lot of brainstorming and work.
Thank you. But a lot of good input there.
And I tried my hardest to get it down to three columns.
It's not over yet. And the last slide, this is very in draft form, but we wanted to revisit our beliefs and that's why all of them's not on there. But one person in our group suggested, what about the word coffee? And then coming up with the beliefs based on that. So, we're really kind of just playing around with that. So, if you've got any ideas about that, we would love to hear them.
I do like the idea of coffee as a kind of mnemonic device that helps people remember those beliefs. And, you know, you think about the C in community and the O in opportunity and focus, that fairness, the essence, and the ethics. All right. Great.
Thank you.
District determination, we have Dr. Dana Mickers and Dr. Tonya Johnson here to talk about this district determination letter that we received from the Georgia Department of Education. Dr. Mickers, someone heard it over here.
Thank you for the opportunity to share some good news. Many times when our department has news, it's sometimes challenging information. So, we surely want to share when we get great news. And each year, IDA, which is Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, requires each state to monitor the school districts and to basically give them a report card in our department. And they do this in several different areas. And actually, the very last slide kind of shows it the best. There you go. On the different indicators that the state looks at, you get points based on each of those. And the total maximum score that you can receive is twenty points. And this year, our system received a twenty points. Dr. Reese did ask, does this mean we're no longer disproportionate? No, that is not, but it means we are definitely headed in the right direction. They have time, several times, and they review our policies and procedures. And we have every indication that all of those are, you know, as they should be and we're moving forward. So, according to the state, we do meet the requirements for district determination. And again, that was just a little bit of good news that we just had to share. Thank you.
Where you should.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all for what you do. I know it's challenging, a lot of moving pieces, but thank you. Construction update, we have Mr. Michael Spikes here. Mr. Spikes, if you could come up to the podium and describe what we have and where we're at with our projects going on in the school system.
He looks excited.
I was just gonna touch base on what's been going on. This is the front of the new new construction. We're planning on moving in. Starting moving tomorrow afternoon. Books and teaching material, we'll continue into next week. That's another view. We installed the bell back in the bell tower and lots of construction. They'd already put it up, so you can see it there, some of that inside. This is a view of the gym. The floor's complete. Only thing they like, if you go to the next slide, they like putting the seats on the bleachers and the gym will be completed. This is the needs, which furniture for it will come in in February. We're just using it to kind of stage out the other furniture that's coming in. Some of, I think the desks are coming in next. Anybody's using it. This is a typical classroom. Standing in the door looking to the left-hand side. Picture of the right-hand side of the room, the back to forward projector. That's the reception area looking out into the, I guess we call it foyer. That's the feature wall. That's the floor running out of the old school. They're gonna take, there's a half moon window. It isn't the end yet. They're gonna put it incorporated in that wall. That's the principal's office. Some of the office furniture is already being installed. That's teaching work room. During Thanksgiving break, we did some renovations to the last few classrooms of the high school. We changed up the carpet. As far as I know, there's no more carpet in classrooms at Coffee High. Just ROTC mobile unit that they use. That's just another picture of the same unit. One Performance Arts Center there, they're finishing up the basement, foundation walls. I think the steel is, according to Josh, is supposed to be coming into the shop. Start laying out and cutting near this, it needs to be down to start actually seeing something going on inside the condo. It's just another picture looking from the north of the end side. Coffee High try, we started removing the old surface off of it. They, they actually have the surface taped off of it.
I love the recycling that old surface of the other.
Yes, they, they put it in bins.
Is it in those white bins around there or is that the?
No, no, those are the, that's the adhesive, that's the latex that helps to try.
The white racks?
They put it in roll-off bins.
All right.
They are doing the runways as well. That it? That's all I got. Unless you have any questions.
They are asking.
What was that anticipated completion date on the performance arts?
The needs we've had with them out there, they've said once they get this basement done, we'll see us start working up pretty quick is what they keep telling us. We just have to get all that done correctly by the contractor. Just say it's very tedious making sure they get all that right.
I do have a question. Parts ring at the bus shop, we getting a little with that?
Still waiting on quotes. I had three people look at it.
Any other questions about the construction update? Resolutions, we have a banking resolution for Eastside Elementary School. They're requesting to move their banking to AmerisBank. The board has to approve a resolution for that?
We don't have a policy that they automatically do that, or the banking institutes in the city that move them ever so often. So, they have to make a resolution.
Mike, can you address that?
There's nothing in policy that says that they have to. The reason they're doing this is because there's a feature that Ameris offers. Parents that they're, if they have an account with Ameris, Ameris will send them a check periodically based on deposit levels and things like that. So, they, they decided to shift over to Ameris here.
But you're saying there's nothing, it's not even in?
I guess you're asking, why would we have the board approve the movement from, the moving of the account from one to?
I was under the impression that either it was a policy or it was a requirement of civil association that, you know, ever so often you move the bank back to Ameris.
We don't, they don't have to, like Mike said, they're moving because they're, they've got an incentive program. They'll get a little extra money based on having people back from Ameris. Ms. Council?
Ms. Johnson might be referring to the board situation where they used to, every year, bid it out for all the boards. This just individual schools. And then Ms. Johnson, it got where the, the banks couldn't give the school board a good enough deal if they had to bid it every year. So, I think, Mr. Dre, didn't they start doing it every three years?
Three years.
But on the individual schools, they got, the high schools probably got five accounts. They, they moved theirs around, whatever's advantageous, but that's, the board approves it, but there's no requirement, to my knowledge, state law or even policy or custom that really governs on the schools.
So, the school would make the decision where it can hold the account?
Well, you have to approve it. But they, but as far as the school system, kind of keep everybody happy locally. If there's a board, y'all go out every three years. Put it right on the, on the school level.
And the schools pretty well back to that one back, but it does have to have a board.
But you can do that, Ms. Johnson. I mean, you, the board can do anything. There's, there's never been an issue on it, man.
No, I was under the impression that it was schools, but maybe it was just the board that was changing every three years.
Right. How'd y'all do it, the middle school? Y'all used to?
That's why I asked the question.
Yeah.
You know, years ago, when the rates were better, they may pay a shop more, but now it's pretty so tight. All right. Resolution, if it meets the board's approval, we'll place that on the consent agenda. Resolution for Eastside Elementary School. This is required resolution so that we can collect the entitlement funding to be reimbursed for the Eastside construction project. Renovation of restrooms. Any questions about this? Mike, you got any comments about this?
The only thing I'll say is that the State Department, Facilities Department has sent us a letter that we're gonna get two-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand of state money. They've sent that forward to the Georgia Financial Puts to send that down, that money down. And they'll wire that in and that'll go back into our SLOST funds. That's ninety percent of what the state's gonna reimburse us for Eastside. That's 90% of what the state's gonna reimburse us for Eastside. The last 10%, this is one of the three documents we need to submit to them in order to get that last 10% retention that they're holding right now.
There's no objection. We'll place that on the consent agenda for the regular monthly. Policies. We have policy descriptor code J B C C A two unsafe school choice option. This was a policy that has not been revised since 2006. And it's been changing the law governing this. The George School Board Association sent us a notice that they recommend that you update this policy based on that. So this is just an update of that policy. It's been seated on the table for 30 days and therefore we'll place this on the consent agenda. All right, if there's no objection, we'll move forward to the board meeting dates for 2018. We reviewed the calendar with the central office staff, the directors, assistant superintendents reviewed it to, did not find any conflicts with these dates. We looked at holidays and such based on the previous calendars and very similar to the meeting dates from last year. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Just for clarification, it says on there for December 2016 meeting.
All right. That on the?
The document.
Yeah, on the document, all right. Does this need to be put on the line? We've got January coming up that we were asking for too. But we will make some changes to it. Y'all can hold off. So dates on the meetings, final? It's June 6, 7, and 8. Or yeah, 7, 8, 9.
First of June?
Yes. And we typically have a call meeting towards the end of May to get the budget approved.
Is there, would there be, would the board be open to the May meeting being with 17? Of May? Which is our traditional? Well, that's not our traditional first, but it is the first Thursday instead of the second Thursday.
The third, there is this close to graduation.
I mean, we could probably do our, can we do our budget?
Yeah, we've been doing that, that May 10. We've been doing that early May meeting because we do a lot of personnel there. We're trying to hire folks before the summer break. And it's been helpful. We did this, started doing this about five years ago to, in case we had a hire that we needed to get done. Or if we had somebody that we needed to let out of their contract prior to May 15. Because May 15 is the deadline.
Over 15 costs.
They're telling somebody that they, they're not gonna receive a contract. So that, that gives us a meeting right there before the deadline to let somebody know they're not gonna receive a contract. And we did that back during the height of the recession. And that way, if we saw where there were positions we weren't, you know, necessarily gonna need or whatnot, we had a.
Do we have to do it on the Thursday now?
Well, I've just got a comment, I won't be here on that Thursday. I already, already know what it takes.
We don't want a lot of personnel, you folks.
Yeah, that May 10, we could change that to whenever we work for y'all.
First in the next week?
Well, he wants it done by the 15th.
Before 15?
Before the 15th. We did it earlier in the week, maybe the Tuesday night.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
That'll work for you?
Do it earlier than that. The next Thursday, get the sale.
Yeah, April 15.
If you do it on Monday, he's probably gonna get it by the end of the school.
The reason I brought in 17 is I was thinking that date, the 23rd. You gotta add member.
Yeah. It's, it's whatever, it's the pleasure of the board. I'm fine with it.
May 8 work for everybody? I just think we do a lot of personnel, we need to try to all be here.
Yeah, it's, it seems to have been helpful for us the past few years. Would you agree, Ms. Clay, you've been doing the personnel right there?
So we're doing contracts.
Will the 8th be a problem?
I mean, I'm not trying to leave the personnel stuff to a different, but would, would the 26th of April be too soon for the information that you require?
That's what I'm wondering, would meet or right on top of each other, really? What if?
We've gone back and forth about when we're gonna do overall recommendations for next year. We talked about even in March, trying to get them out there because of the shortage of teachers and security people. Our job there is going to be the 24th of March.
Would there be a, if we did a Monday, the 14th? For the May meeting?
That pushing it?
Yeah, well, contracts have to be out by the 15th.
I'm a little sexy, not the contract.
Yeah, this is, yeah, the only reason we did the, we had that. You just have to let somebody know they're not gonna receive a contract by the 15th. So you would have the 14th. I mean, that's, we never really, that's not been a, you know, a concern.
No, at least advantage in waiting. I mean, there's only one, one surprise I can think of, really one, I can't remember. But if somebody comes up and does something bad.
Yeah.
You know, May 14th and y'all are gonna need them April 30th.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
We could take offer back, but we didn't send the contract.
On the 14th, yeah.
That's what I'm wondering, I mean, if, if Ms. Clay would have everything that you, that, I mean, if y'all are gonna do recommendations, try to have it to us late, late March and have it to us by the April meeting.
Does it make any sense to even have that early May meeting?
Yeah, it does.
All right, that, that's what I'm thinking. So, but I'm, I was just thinking, the 8th is such a, it's right on top of the 26th. That's only one week in between meetings. Could we do the 14th? Can y'all do the 14th?
May 14th?
Yeah, maybe it'd be a Monday, May 14th.
You don't send a contract, just we're gonna send a letter?
And we'd use it for budget purposes too.
Yeah, we do the tentative budget typically at that early May meeting. The other thing to keep in mind is now, there's a new law in place that there has to be two budget hearings prior to the final budget being approved. That's brand new to state now, so we'll have to, that'll have to be.
We did that, we did that this year, didn't we?
We did not.
We sat down that long?
Because we approved it prior to June 30th. If we hadn't waited until after July 1 to approve our final budget, we would have had to have those two hearings. But we made sure we got it.
The next year doesn't matter, we still, we have to have two regardless?
Next year, yeah, regardless of what, we have to have two hearings on that budget prior to the final budget.
You gonna have that 14th?
No, I'll be, I'll be a timer 14th. I'll just, yeah, that's fine, we have a 14th to be good. Well, I'm just thinking of the 8th. I mean, what's, I mean, I know it's right behind the other, but if we're having, we've gotta have two budget meetings in before the end of the year.
The 8th works better with budget.
That's almost two weeks.
Yeah.
No, I just, I just have a concern, Dr. Lee. A lot of districts are already doing contracts February, March.
We're gonna do our contracts.
If our folks don't have a contract to hand and they're offering to join another district.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna go over there because I haven't gotten mine in coffee.
Yeah, this has nothing, this is, we're not, we're gonna issue contracts, nothing.
So we're still gonna do recommendations.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And this has nothing. I think you're mixing up two different issues there. We'll talk about it, we'll talk about it.
I don't need to, probably.
Yeah, no, no, no.
We don't have to approve this right now, maybe we just go ahead or maybe we need.
Well, we, we can't, you know, if we wanna do the 8th, we do the 8th. That'll work fine.
That works the way.
8th and 14th?
We do the 8th.
Well, the 8th works the 14th.
They do, excuse me, my excuse, y'all done administrators a month before, haven't you?
Last year we, we have, but last year we did everybody, the same contractor.
We ain't do it right then.
Yeah, we're talking about doing the administrators in February and then the, all the other stuff in March is what we discussed.
Uh, what Ken's pointing out, that's when you're making an offer. We really got to tell May 15th.
To tell somebody they're not gonna receive a contract.
Right.
And that's, that's different than being approved for a contract. Two different issues.
Contract indication.
Sure, they know they're gonna get a contract, but.
Yeah. You can make an offer, but you can't, you can't renew an offer after May 15th.
But when the contracts due? When the contracts due?
They're not due.
It's usually 10 days after they're due.
Anyways.
So going back to Sid's point, if we do this in February, March, and something occurs, we have until May 15th to change.
I'm not, I didn't say that.
It's on if they sign that contract.
Well, even if they sign, you still have the authority to not to dismiss them.
You can offer a contract, but they're not official till we approve them.
That's right. That's right. There's a lot of variables there, we can get pretty deep.
We just did. We better get away from there.
But the early meeting has been helpful.
Let's do 8th and May.
You make that change on the, and that'll still help us with the budget. Because having that early May meeting has helped us with the budget process. That's been probably the biggest issue that's helped with it. Let me make that change. All right. Are there any other questions? With that change, we'll, we'll place the meeting dates on the agenda, consent agenda for approval. All right. Audience participation. Executive session. I would ask the board that we move to an executive session to discuss personnel and deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, or disciplinary action for dismissal of a public officer or employee. Any questions?
Dr. Lee?
Yes, sir.
Press the board.
Yes, sir.
Heads of do this, I certainly don't wanna be out of my place. But several years ago, same time Dr. Lee came on board, Mike Greatliff came. And the chairman remembers well, and Mr. Preston remembers well, there was some rough times for the board. And not only were there some rough times with the board in terms of governance issues, but also there were some tough financial times. And at the same time, part of what Sax was on our case for was when superintendent was leaving and the comptroller was leaving. And besides my star witness being Mr. Brian Preston, who went up here in Atlanta, the, one of our helpful points was that Dr. Lee was coming on board as a caring superintendent and Mike Greatliff was coming on board as comptroller. The, Mike is a, I told you, in my opinion, stand-up guy. He's experienced, he's detailed. It's gonna be some big shoes to fill. And just from a personal end, I would say, Mike is system. And you know I won't issue, appreciate everything you've done for us.
We have a motion to move into the executive session. Ms. Miller?
Yes, sir.
Preston? Next session? Preston, Ms. Johnson. We will enjoy our work session. And all the old quarters, welcome in.